...before you, Lord, and ask just for your help and guidance in doing more to the city where we can do it in a reasonable manner with complete understanding of one another and move forward with the business in a manner that's honoring you. Lord, we ask you bless this proceeding, watch over us, keep us all safe and healthy, Lord. We ask you soon to Jesus' name.
Amen.
I want to introduce to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're gonna call this meeting to order at six oh four. Roll call, please. Doreen Klaus?
Here.
Dustin Elder?
Here.
Kristy McGeehee?
Here.
Bobby White?
Here.
Okay, moving on. Number one, approval of the agenda.
I'd like to make a motion to add Schrader's Towing onto the agenda as a guest.
Okay, Dustin has made the motion to add Schrader's Towing on as a guest into our agenda. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Bobby has seconded that. All those in favor? Four zero. Okay. Number two, approval of the minutes from January twenty-third.
I'll make a motion when you approve the minutes from January twenty-third.
Doreen has made the motion to approve the minutes from January twenty-third.
Second.
Dustin has seconded that. All those in favor? Four zero. Okay, so we're gonna jump into our guest, Schrader's Towing. Would you mind to come up to our podium? Is that red light on on your microphone? Would you mind to push the button for me, please? Did it light up?
Question, hold it just a moment.
Okay. Well, she's got one for you. Thank you. We do record our meetings just so that the citizens can hear what's going on, keep them all, and then they can hear about your steel. So, tell us what you do.
We tow cars, trucks, and equipment, basically anywhere, coast to coast, wherever you need it. We also move portable buildings, sheds, food trailers, anything of the such.
Okay. Counsel, any questions? You must have found it, because my signature's is on it. Okay. I thought that was the one that was in my box. Okay.
So, and you're not wanting a specific thing, you just wanted a license so people call you, you guys can help them out, or?
We just, we wanna be legal. We wanna do everything the right way. Everything's kinda getting out of control if you look at the tow industry. People's not necessarily following the guidelines and the rules, and we wanna set the example for that. So, where we do work, we wanna be legal.
Okay.
I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion when you approve Schrader's Towing to have a business license in Granby.
Second.
Doreen has made the motion to approve Schrader's business license for Granby, and Dustin has seconded that. All those in favor? Four zero. They can have your license printed up and ready for you by Monday of next week.
Okay, thank you.
It's all right, still? All right, old business, file storage storm shelter. Last time we had a meeting, Lana had brought forth Midwest Storm Shelters, and it was stated that they felt like we should have more than just one bid. So I believe she came back with a total of three. However, Henson said that the seven by seven will not be able to be set inside of the garage due to the height of their crane, so they would not do it. So you have two actual bids. Lana, do you have anything to add to that? Do you have anything to add to it? Nope.
Nothing. I'll text you later. She asked me a question.
Counsel, discussion?
Sorry.
You should have one from Atlas, one from Midwest Storm Shelters, and the note from Henson.
I wasn't here for the last meeting, but I have a couple of questions. Where have they been? Where were they stored before?
Um, downstairs area of City Hall. And they are currently fireproof, fireproof cabinets.
Is, are, are you referring also to all those maps and that big?
Yes, the map, but all the upstairs.
Okay. Also, did you get that email today that I sent you? From the digitizing company?
Oh, yeah, what?
I couldn't answer. Okay, I sent it late. It was, no, 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 you're fine, you're fine. I sent it late.
What, is seven by seven what you're looking to get?
The, um, Midwest Storm Shelter, they said that that was the inside measurement of theirs, and so I tried to accomplish that.
Did you say that Atlas one was not installed?
That their price is not installed, and Henson, they, they said their crane is due to fall to actually go in there, and that's how they would have installed it. They could build any size they want, but because of the location, they didn't install it. It was their recommendation that have contact panels after I spoke with Henson.
So what about digitizing our records?
Um, we have some information there, some free, um, research that I did online. I reached out to some city clerk to find out what they do in their programs, they'll out for it, for during the cost involved with manpower. I don't think that digitizing our records is a bad idea. I, I, I'm not opposed to that at all. That was a part of the initial discussion, so that's kind of a new portion of the discussion. You know, looking for storage and, and saving the employees was my thought. I'm happy to digitize our records and find out what all that's gonna involve. I, I don't think that City Hall has the manpower at this time to, to process the number of documents that we have, but I don't know. Somebody suggested it possibly be returned, something on my work can be done on that.
I have an extremely hard time coming to, I guess the decision to put a storm shelter in for records when we don't have a FEMA storm shelter in the town for the citizens.
Why don't we have a FEMA one?
Why, we have not put in for one. I, I really think it's something that we need to check into, is getting a FEMA storm shelter for our citizens.
Is-
I don't feel like we should get a storm shelter for, for our records. To me, people mean a lot more than records, and if we digitize those records, that's gonna take care of that. I do agree, I want our employees to be safe, but I also want our citizens to be safe, and I don't think it sends out a very good impression that we're going to store records and have a storm shelter for our employees when we don't have actually one for our citizens.
You're talking about FEMA?
Yes.
Shelters?
An actual, a shelter that will actually protect. Or FEMA or certified? I mean, they don't-
FEMA does not certify. I, I emailed FEMA myself this last week. I've, I've done a lot of digging when it comes to storm shelters this last week. FEMA absolutely does not certify shelters at all. Even if they pay for the shelter, and it's built to the specs of a safe room in which they call safe room, they will not certify them.
Okay, what other safe room do we have?
Right now, what is open to the citizens is the senior center. The reason it's considered is the safest place for the senior, or for the citizens to go. It is outfitted with the roll-down door that locks, and no windows. It's the bottom basement of the annex up there, basically is what it is. There's been, it's, it's gone back and forth. I've, I've sat and talked to Tim, and I've talked to Jim, and I've talked to Ira. I asked Ira, why was that considered to be where everyone goes? He said, because there was an individual that came around town and looked at all of the different shelters. He said, the churches open up, and we open up that, but actually, that's considered to be the safest place for the, the citizens to go to. And so I emailed FEMA because I thought, well, I need some paperwork on this. I need to understand. FEMA said they have no, no record of it, and that they wouldn't certify things even if they did have a record of it, because they don't certify shelters. Then I talked to the emergency management lady, which is Charlotte Geller, from Newton County. She did suggest that it would be nice for a city and the school districts, because oftentimes they go together. The school districts and the cities or municipalities will file for a FEMA shelter. They'll use FEMA money to, to put in this FEMA shelter. So I did talk to Scott Charleston, because I heard that they were supposed to be putting in shelters. The high school does have a community FEMA shelter in which unlocks at a certain time for the whole community. The schools are, they're getting ready to put one in Triway and one in Granby. They are not FEMA shelters. They are supposed to be using no-tax bonds to create these shelters, in which the shelter would be open during the day when there are students. However, let's say the tornado comes through at two o'clock in the morning, it will not unlock for citizens. That's, that's my, what I learned. But my question is, here's what's odd to me, and I've noticed I've got so many questions about storm shelters just because this is on there. When we're looking to, to take care of our records and our employees at the same time, all of a sudden, we haven't thought anything about our citizens. I've been in this seat for a year and a half, not a single person's came to me and said, hey, let's apply for a FEMA grant. Not a single person has mentioned it. So I'm not understanding why all of a sudden we're saying that we've pushed our citizens to the side because we're doing this. You can do two consecutive things at, at a time, and if, if a storm shelter was an issue, why has nobody brought that to me?
I don't think that necessarily the storm shelter is an issue, in my opinion, because they can go there, and it is safe, and, but the employees could also go over there. It's a block away.
And so, file storage, which was-
We digitize.
The initial reason that this discussion was brought up, and I did some checking on it. It was an added benefit that the employees would have sometimes very close files, you know, we could lock up and go there. But I'm in agreement with Jamie, I don't know why we can't involve, and why we can't say twenty-two hundred, who are employees certainly aren't gonna be part of it. To me, that mindset is a gun on the handle.
So, we put a, a storm shelter in here, a safe room, for files and for employees. What happens when we have citizens come to the door? They know there's a storm shelter here, and they want in. They want to be in that shelter too.
I'm not trying anybody away. I'm, I'm surprised at that question. I'm sorry. I'm, I'm glad we asked it, this conversation, because we were trying to find a way to secure records, and Jen and I were discussing it, and Jen said, well, what about a storm shelter? That seems like a great idea, and then it's close by, and the girls needed it too, and I thought that would absolutely serve that purpose.
If I recall, that was actually a conversation that was on the list when we were building this section over here, because of the fact that they were gonna have to move all these records over, and there wasn't space in here for it. So that, that was actually, if I, if I remember correctly, I mean, I can go and dig out the folder and take a look, but I recall us talking about it. The, the discussion was building one out back in the back drive out here. And why was it, why did it come from outside to inside? What was the big change on that?
Probably because of the moisture.
Okay.
It would just be better protected in here from moisture, and they are not waterized.
Who is it that, who is it that unlocks the community center when there's a storm?
Fire department.
Or the office.
Okay, do we know how, how many people use it?
Probably most I've ever seen that person, then like twenty-five.
Okay, so, so, so a pretty good group of people come there then?
It's mainly from the trailer park, but it's got a capacity of fifty people. So fifty people, you're shut down no matter what at that shelter.
And it does need to be manned, too.
Actually, my opinion, the churches bring in a lot of people to their places. Where I see a city shelter is liability. The liability of having a city shelter to get to fifty people, or about fifty first.
You can't fill somebody now.
Yeah, you-
We also have problems with-
You're not be able to accommodate the whole city.
Shutting the doors and keeping people in. Part, part of the problem last time was people wanted to go in and out constantly, and we're like, no, once you're in, you have to stay in. You can't keep opening the doors.
You gotta have a man.
That was-
So that would work for them to manage.
So what's the capacity for this?
Um, I believe it's eight.
And that includes the files? Because you have how-
That's in addition to the file cabinet.
Okay, and you have how many file cabinets? Six, and we're getting ready to get another one for the court?
Courts is not going to stay in there. It's a fire, it's a fireproof one that we're gonna keep in here. Okay.
I have not ready for those file cabinets.
How many papers do you think it'll hold for the Department of Fire Protection?
I'm sorry?
It's five cabinets, and how many papers do you have?
I think that'll hold the file cabinets, we need plus eight people.
Eight, and six, but what?
Seven by seven.
So a fire safe cabinet isn't sufficient? I mean, if it's gonna keep the court records, it's not gonna-
So these are historical documents that we don't get access to. I never had access to them, but we're required by law to keep them. I would not want them in my office. The fireproof safe of the court is accessible daily.
They have to have it right beside them. That's exactly what you asked for. Yeah. No, that was what, we sat down with Jared the other day, and he, he was telling us what we needed to change for our courts.
So can we not still store the records in the basement at the old City Hall?
That's where they're at right now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If you rent it out, if you rent it out, then you've got a rented-out building with all of your old records where they, they can take a look at your water lines, your, all of that stuff.
Can we not secure them?
You don't get the basement if you're renting it.
They'll build it, and they'll seal them off.
Seal off the back part, where the bathrooms are?
If they're not in there, it's already used, that way they can't get in there.
So then, you're gonna, you, you'd have to rent it out without util, without like bathrooms and stuff, because they're all down there in that area. All of your, all of your bathrooms, your sinks and stuff are at the bottom half of City Hall.
The basement.
In the, like, the drop-down basement.
I have no idea what's on, I'm just asking.
Yeah. Well, I mean, it, all the plumbing's in the back, if that makes sense.
Are there any other city-owned buildings that have basements that we do like six block ends in?
City-owned buildings with basements.
Just the police department or the fire department?
Yeah, just the fire department, and-
We got trucks.
The bay is in the back where the basement is.
I had Jamie ask her today. I have a twelve-by-twelve room.
Yeah, it's-
Room.
And it's secure without a door. I mean, there's no-
Right, there is no door.
There's no, it's not as safe.
It is. It's what houses our SCBA compressor, we just bought, our compressor, our weight room. Behind it dangers for a child being hurt.
But what about files? I mean, that's what we're talking about, is file cabinets. We're not worrying about people being in there, but just storing file cabinets in there.
I guess they could.
Is it, in that area, that, but that area is accessible to all of your firemen, right? In and out? Because what I saw was weight benches and all that equipment. Is that, is that our issue, Lana?
We have to play with our weight room part of it to make it work.
But there's no door there.
There's no doors.
That's, yeah.
It's a big opening. Like French doors style opening outside.
With no door on it.
With no door.
Yeah.
Because we can't, because the compressor has to have air to that room.
I mean, I did email a company to ask about digitizing, to see what they're gonna charge. They were very specific. They sent me a list of all of these things we need to tell them, in order to even give me a list of, uh, let's see, second, let's see, how many boxes, and what sizes, file drawers, tall, vertical, long, number of shelvings, feet, what percentage of papers are double, document types, business, are you ready to scan now, two weeks, one week? I mean, it, it has several things. I couldn't answer all of those questions, so, but I did forward it to you. I have a feeling it's gonna be kind of expensive, because what, what I've came up with is anywhere from, what was it, seven cents to fifteen cents per sheet is what the going rate was, according to several of them that I pulled up. But I couldn't get, they, I couldn't get them to actually say, yes, this is really what we're gonna charge. It was like, oh, there's a span here. So, and it depends on the size, and I couldn't get anything set. Sorry.
Well, can we just postpone this and try to obtain additional information you have in? I'll make contact with those specific clerks that can, for me, what programs they need, and what type of comp was. I had asked initially, but wasn't able to respond.
Okay. Dustin, you've been quiet.
I've taken it all in.
You just soaking it in?
Hey, I just, I wanna say that this, this, I don't think, okay. This wasn't just thrown out there as a, hey, guess what, let's do this. I mean, it's something that's been talked about, come on. It seemed like a logical, resourceful way to manage these files that are permanent, historical files. And I feel like a few people have gotten upset about it, and so everybody is waffling about what, and I'm just picking my mind here. I feel like it's a very reasonable, plausible solution. And so I don't understand why we're comparing, it's apples and oranges in my book. Do we need to do much FEMA shelter for twenty-two hundred people? Possibly.
And we should, we should be applying for that, that's-
But one doesn't have anything to do with the other.
They do not.
And the benefit is, if we do have it here, to store these shelters, to keep them, they're in fire saves, they're not in tornado saves. To keep them in someplace where we can care for the documents that we've been entrusted with, and in addition to that, put some employees in there that might be in danger. I don't get it, they're waffling. And I'm just being honest. Y'all will rarely hear me speak my mind like this, but I think this is pretty good.
I, I, I will say, I've caught a lot of heat. I've had several different people ask me questions, and it, it honestly was quite bizarre to me, too, to be quite honest with you. When I was on the ambulance board, they put, they put shelters in their, in their facilities for the employees. I, I don't, I, I don't quite get, like I said, just because you're doing something for employees doesn't mean you're not doing something for your citizens. No one has came to me and even asked me to apply for these grants. I, I'm confused as to why all of a sudden we're having a debate as to what kind of- I come into this seat, and we had a shelter put in place by the mayor before me, and so that's what, you know, I've literally had, when I first started, I had a police officer wake me up at twelve o'clock at night, say, give me the key to this shelter, I gotta open it for people. Okay, went down, gave you a key, right? And I said, don't wake me up, because I'm sleeping through this storm. And so, anyways, I gave you a key, and, and so from then on out, you know, we had a shelter to take care of our, our citizens. I have never once thought that that was not safe for people. So for someone to come to me and even say, you're putting citizens in a place that's not safe, is, I, I, I'm dumbfounded as to why someone would even assume that. So I'm here for the citizens. If, if filing for a FEMA shelter is what our city wants to do, I'm a hundred percent for it. We'll work on it, we'll put in a grant. But, once again, I personally was accused of not taking care of my citizens. I love my citizens, and, and that shelter is what I, I was under the understanding, we built for it, and it has been seen, and they put the roll down. I even bricked in the windows myself with my own hands. So that's the shelter that I believe was safe for our citizens. Just FYI. So. Anything else, counsel?
And your employees.
It would have been great if you did a remodel of this and have any included any cost to build inside, say, hindsight.
Do you think it would have cost less to do a concrete?
No, probably not, but the planning of it and whatnot, it probably not.
You probably would have.
I think the mom who paid you the money, yeah, for the, that's probably it. What's, I mean, you're right about what you said, I'm not the mom that had that, that's just me.
When I saw twenty twenty, we, we found a lot of things along the way, and I don't think that helped very well. You know, I think that's, that's the, I think people learn about home or building or something, or their mom or something, after the fact.
I'm, I'm pretty positive that we, we have it. I'll pull that list out, because I have the old list that states what all we were gonna do. And I know that if you go over a certain number, Steve, you have to actually pay prevailing wage, and you have to hire it out differently. So I know that things were broken. I'm sorry?
I'm aware of that.
So things were broken into different sections, and, and I'm pretty sure that one was not added on there, because it put it over that seventy-five thousand mark, is, is my understanding. There was three or four things. We actually had our boys take the carpet up, because that was another one of them. There were several of them that would have kicked us over. I'm, I'm, I'm gonna pull that paperwork up, because I, I think it was there.
Excuse me.
Go ahead.
The question that was asked of me was, how much did we go over what we allotted for the remodel for City Hall? And I didn't have the answer to that, because I know that several additional things had been added, and they were like, like your question, why did, why wasn't it included at the time? And I couldn't answer that question either. So how far over budget did we go?
This is the first time I've been asked that question in, in a year. I think we talked about it early on, but since we've been here, that's not been a discussion. That's information that I could have provided, can I, but I have that information right now. But again, I can provide you that information, and I'm happy to do that, but will that change your mind on whether or not we need a place to store these historic documents? I mean, I, I feel like we're eating a dead horse over issues that are unrelated to the horse. We need to take care of this, or we don't. Like I said, I'm-
Is this the only viable option? Is there any other option?
You put them in here, the storage, the fireproof, not tornado-proof, you still just put them in here?
In the bay.
And that's where they stay.
They're, they're, they also won't be climate-controlled if you just put them out there.
Oh, that's if they get blown away by a tornado.
You pick up the fire-
It's happened to other towns. I mean, fire, anything could happen.
It's fine.
I think that was a hindsight thing, maybe we should have done a shelter.
Do what?
It could probably be one of those hindsight things, maybe we should have done a shelter.
That's exactly what we've been saying. Any, any other comments from citizens? Yes.
I'm sure a lot of them. Insurance, liability insurance. I know sometimes we use the shelter inside of a building, and not for employees, or insurance will be checked too. I didn't want, I didn't have, I'm gonna say that discount. If we proceed with the five-year term, you know, I guess, I just wanna say, it's over a five-year, two-year period. If you're getting a discount, then how would it affect the overall price that you're doing?
Well, since I haven't said nothing, I've been quiet, so, uh, listening to everybody, but I, I'm gonna approach this from a slightly different angle, and it's that, uh, I don't really care about the paperwork. I, I care about the people that work for the city, and in my opinion, we should be taking care of them. So we should take care of the citizens as well, but, but we can go and do the grants and all that stuff, and, I mean, it's, it's just like, if, if it's true that nobody's brought up any problems with the current shelter situation with the churches and with the-
The shelter's a block away, though. You can see it.
I see ya. Speak.
You can see it from here.
If it's hailing, it's pouring down rain.
People are gonna do it.
So, on this whole storm shelter, I, I made comments about it, okay? So Lana wants to speak, so I'll speak, and I'll just say what that process was, right? It's always about seek to understand, okay? So the issue was initially buying a storm shelter to store documents, but then making it big enough for employees as well, okay? The whole question was, about asking about different storm shelters, versus understand what options of storm shelter were within the city first. It was never intended to say that a city employee couldn't be in a storm shelter that's with your files. It was more, why would the city spend monies, spend money to buy a storm shelter to store documents? That made no sense to me, that's why I brought it up. I had no intention of saying that an employee can't stay in a storm shelter, that's what the city decided to do, because the citizens have to go across the street to the storm shelter, and therefore, the city employees should be able to utilize that, we phrase that storm shelter, safe place to go. That's all it was. All I'm saying is, why would we spend money on a storm shelter just to file documents?
I'm a citizen, I don't have to go across the street.
I stay in my house.
Citizens.
Because I have a.
Where they need to go.
Because I have a storm shelter in my home. So, I, I have a point that I'd like to make. I am a citizen.
I haven't been talking.
Oh, I thought you were finished, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So, you have many places around the city citizens can go to during implement weather, whether it be a church, someone's basement, senior center, wherever the case may be. So, there's already places in the city designated for people to go during implement weather. So, I was trying to understand what the correlation was between buying a storm shelter with city funds for documents and city employees. That's all it was about. I'd never would, I would never put a citizen in jeopardy of being hurt. There was a correlation to try to understand, why would we, why would we work out money for a storm shelter for documents, when we could put them somewhere else in the city? That's all it was about. Now, how people took it from there, that's on that. They could've came back and asked more questions, and could've gave more information, but I, I'm just like you guys. I'm about the citizens and the safety of the citizens, and I'm also about being frugal about our money. I just didn't take a storm shelter justified spending our money to store documents. That's it.
Okay. My, my statement, and, and this is what bothers me the most, I think, is, I am a citizen. I've lived in Granby most of my life. Um, when I was a kid, we didn't have a storm shelter, we didn't have anywhere to go. I have a storm shelter in my home. I don't have to go out and brave the weather to get into a storm shelter. They're not at their home, they don't have a choice. They're here working for us, for the city. So, we have to make a decision, when you talk about liability. These girls that are working in this building, we can easily say, there's a storm shelter up the road, hightail it, get there. I don't care if it's hailing, I don't care if it's raining, and I don't care if the tornado drops down while you're on your way. That's where the storm shelter is, good luck. I can say that to them very easily. We can also say, we're gonna place it in here, it's gonna cover our documents, and it's gonna save you. Those are our two choices, and that's up to us. I, it, it's, we are, we are frugal, too, we've worked very hard. You stood here and you heard the auditor come up in front of you guys. We are excellent stewards of our money. We have done great for this town. There are a few things that we have purchased that we felt were necessi- necessities, when sometimes our employees do, don't feel like they're necessities. I've had to hear about a few things not too long ago. Um, so, it, what it boils down to is, is the council's decision on, you know, do you, do you wanna buy a storm shelter that does two things, it'll hold your documents, it'll hold your people? Um, if not, move on. I mean, that's really what it boils down to. So, counsel?
Where, where do the other city employees go to, you know, from my mother, like the.
Can you tell me which one?
Are the people?
It depends on where they're located in the city. So, if the firemen.
They're in a vehicle, right?
I'm sorry?
They would probably be in a vehicle and drive to wherever they need to go.
It, it depends.
Okay.
On, on which, which person they are and where they're located at, at the time. So, Victor might still be out at his facility out there. Police will probably out driving around, and usually, they're, they're yelling out tornado or what have you.
Yes, so they would be hightailing, they'd be in a vehicle of some sort, transporting, so it'd be a flight.
Yes, they, they would be in a, in a city vehicle, yes.
Does City Hall have a city vehicle? Have employees here, do you mind if that happens?
It all depends on who's here at the time. So, it, it all depends on who's here at the time. Um, so, Sandra does not have a city vehicle, no. Um, Deb will not have a city vehicle. So, no, there's not always a city vehicle for them to.
Is, is there a vehicle, is there a vehicle here at the City Hall that employees have the ability to use, that will pay?
No.
No?
No. There is not a vehicle that sits here at City Hall that the employees can utilize. The department heads have vehicles. There is a, um.
And we're mainly that?
When a department head is in the building and their vehicle is here, then yes, they are utilizing that vehicle, if the department head is here. So, like I said, it all depends on who's here at the time. Yes, Wendy?
I was, I was the main effect spotters.
Yes, they're firemen, that's what I was trying to explain. Oftentimes, your, your utility guys will be going to the fire department, because they are, they're spotters.
Probably positioned throughout the city.
And positioned, yeah. You gotta, you gotta look at where your command central's are, too. So, I believe Jeanette would be at the fire station during a.
Major.
Major one, right? So, she would be at the fire station.
The local dispatching.
Then, then you have a volunteer up there manning the facility.
Right. And that touches down to six people checking the town.
Right. So, and, and once, they, you guys used to be right next door to them, so oftentimes, they would just run next door and into like the command center, so that they would just be available. So, I'm sorry, did you have something else? Yes? I'm talking to Wendy, I'm sorry.
So, if all of these employees go up to the community center, and you have that person, now you're down to just holding forty-five citizens, correct?
Gosh, I'm so sorry, say it again.
I said, if your employees from here go up to the community center, now you're down to only allowing forty-five people in there.
Yeah, it depends on how many employees that you wanna put up there, yeah.
You said the most, you're saying it's twenty-five over there? Not, yeah. It's put on the phone.
So, I, I guess it's the two-for thing that, that, that I'm seeing as a, as a plus on this, is, we, from, just from what I've heard tonight, we gotta get the records out of the old City Hall in order to rent the place, is that correct? Because you can't use the downstairs unless we do some construction and close it off, which is gonna cost money. We can't put it in the fire department, 'cause we're gonna have to build a wall or stuff, which is gonna cost money. Or we buy the storm shelter that we're talking about, store the records here where we can maintain them, and have the dual purpose of being able to take care of our employees. And we spend money. So, three different ways, three different ways to spend money. One way protects our employees, so that's the way I go.
Have a motion, or? Do you, Chris? Anything else, counsel?
Do you guys have more discussion? I'll make a mo- motion that we purchase the, uh, storm shelter from Midwest Storm Shelters, and the reason why I say Midwest Storm Shelters is because it's a Granby business, and I wanna keep our money in town, if it's possible. Uh, it's also the best, um, estimate that we have. So, I'll make a motion that we buy the storm shelter from Midwest Storm Shelters and install it in the PD's garage.
Okay, Dustin has made the motion to purchase the storm shelter from the Midwest Storm Shelters. Does he have a second? No second? Sorry, Dustin, motion fails. All right. Moving on, new business, bills to pay, balances on hand. I held one of the bills out, uh, did not send it back to Lana, 'cause I wanna ask a question about it. Neosho Chamber of Commerce, um, we are paying Neosho Chamber of Commerce three hundred and fifty dollars a year for a membership. Uh, I just thought I would ask you guys, is, and, and it's a renewal, are you guys really wanting to renew this? It's Neosho Chamber of Commerce, it's a, um, basically, we have a membership through them. We can attend some of their events for a discounted rate. I'm not sure what it's doing for our.
Yeah, what do we get out of it, sort of masking?
That's, don't they, um, advertise jobs that we have, when we send it to them?
I, I mean, they have a Facebook page, like lots of other places do.
But a lot of people utilize that page.
What do they, what is the chamber actually, what is the benefit of the chamber for the city?
I, I have not personally realized the benefit. I've not reached out to them a few times for assistance, possibly in my thing, the old City Hall building. The different ideas are in town here, and. And I just haven't seen any results from that, and they're always agreeable, you know, they'll, they'll help with something, but I just haven't.
I haven't seen them, I, I follow them, and I haven't, haven't seen.
Do they do the, if we don't renew, will they still come and do, um, media for like ribbon cuttings and things like that?
I can, I can buy.
Not, not a ribbon cutting, no. They will not do a ribbon cutting.
Only if, like, yeah.
But would ribbon cutting for what?
'Cause they came and did a ribbon cutting for when we opened this. And they did it when we did the, um, ground, groundbreaking for the, and hopefully, they'll do it. They would do it when we break ground for the new water system, so.
So, that's why I was getting, see, you could, you could call a media outlet and not pay three hundred and fifty dollars for it.
I'm just asking, would they still do it if we did it?
And they would still help our businesses if they signed up, like, you know, like the quilt shop, they are part of the chamber, so they still help them.
I think WH is also, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Most of, a lot of them are.
I mean, basically, they, they say, they advocate for our business and community with public officials and stakeholders. I, I'm not, I'm not seeing Granby really pushed on the Neosho chamber. I'm just not seeing it, I haven't seen it for years.
They just showed up to the dog park, maybe, that's where they're not staying around here.
Yeah, and a lot of those things, like, we have connections where we can just call certain companies, like Casey always comes, Casey Foreman, your, yeah.
They came to Snow Day.
Yeah. You can call them, that's free advertising.
Yeah, we called them and they came and did free advertisement for the Snow Day, so, yeah.
I don't know, I, I started to sign it and send it on, and I was like, wait, I wanna ask you guys, 'cause I'm just not feeling like we're, nothing against the chamber, I just don't, I feel like they're more business oriented and less city.
And it says the three, us three fifty for the year? Okay, don't pay it.
Is that?
Yeah.
Yes. Um, can I get that in a motion, just so I can make sure it's covered?
I'll make a motion that we do not renew our contract with the Neosho Chamber.
Okay, Doreen has made the motion to not renew the contract with the Neosho Chamber of Commerce.
I'll second.
Bobby has seconded that, all those in favor? Four zero. Put that back down, sorry. Now, back to the bills to pay. Are those WEX cards working out for you guys? Is that like how you like to do it? It's going excellent, okay.
Lana, thank you for making a different copy, 'cause this one was, uh, so confusing. I'll make a motion that we approve the bills to pay and balances on hand.
Doreen has made the motion to go ahead and approve the balances and pay the bills. Do we have a second?
Second.
Dustin has seconded that, all those in favor? Four zero. Okay, department head reports. I do wanna say that Chief Williams and I have been sitting down, I've rode a lot with, uh, Officer Dino around town, doing different things, and, uh, Chief Williams and I sat down, they did a hundred and forty-one calls last month. Um, there's been questions about how much county does. I would say, uh, we have a log that states how many times county comes into our town. Um, there were sixty times, those were not sixty calls, however. Some of those were service papers, some of those were warrants, um, some of those were them following up, checking on things that came from Neosho. So, I'd say approximately twenty-three times is what we came up with, um, where county has actually assisted us on calls. And we took a hundred and forty-one, so those are two separate numbers.
Murphy, looks like you had a busier than average month.
I feel like I've heard you a lot.
Victor, what's the update on the, uh, uh, upgrade out there?
They're cleaning, they're getting cleaned up the last few days, almost quitting off, or just about that.
All right. That's exciting.
So, that, that stuff, that extra stuff that we approved at the last meeting, was that purchased and it's there?
Yeah, it's logged on order, like they generate, they take a couple of months, uh, a lot of times, to come back.
Yeah, 'cause it's big, yeah.
Yeah, everything's been ordered, some of that may come in a little bit later.
So, so, a- and I know that wasn't all of that money, though, right? Did, I mean, do you have other stuff that we can get in under the wire?
We're working on that, and trying to get reimbursed for some other expenditures that we've done several years ago, maybe reimbursable through the, uh, community block, but it was.
That brings me to the other point of the CBDG grants. Wendy, this is gonna hurt your ears. So, we got an email the other day that states that since the CBDG grant is not closed out by the end of March first, which we have absolutely no control over, because that project is not finished, um, we are not going to qualify for any CBDG grants for the next year, for the twenty twenty-five fiscal year. Um, I was hoping that the one we were putting through, through will, would squeak through. I don't think it's going to. I really kinda pressured Sue Baccorn to see if we could make some stuff happen, and I got an email this long, that's why it's not going to. So, it's all in the fact that it's just taken so long to finish that project out and the extensions, so.
Maybe we can meet to go over what you were looking at with that, and maybe find something else.
That'd be great.
Hey, Victor, a couple of questions, and, 'cause I always look at this, and it's just, a lot of it's, a lot of it's Greek to me. So, I, I actually read it this time, and I wanted to ask a couple of questions, 'cause, 'cause I, a couple of people's asked me. So, what, with the new plant, what capacity are we running at? So, right now, you know, before we had East Newton, that project, before we had other stuff, what, what is a, what is a regular, everyday Granby day? What capacity is the plant?
I think about fifty percent of design.
Okay, so, design, we can take another, another fifty percent?
Yeah, right now, design limits, we can treat it up to two hundred and twenty thousand gallons a day, and we probably average a hundred and twenty. But then you can also have capacity during these big storm events, so that's, that's why this lot of this upgrade is happening, you know, we're gonna handle a million gallons in a day, or whatever the heck it is. But, yeah, we've got plenty of capacity, and that was some of the first questions, you know.
Yeah, 'cause I want, I'm, I, I've been wondering, 'cause we're talking about the East Newton thing, and how many people we can add to the system before.
And that'll be part of their study, you know, we'll be looking at, making sure we do have the capacity.
So, we're meeting fifty percent capacity for a day? That's with the school running now?
Well, the school.
We don't have the school on us. I'm, I'm talking about Granby. It's on us.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, and we're able to hold the capacity for that, for the school. So, with the upgrade, the, additional high school, will be able to.
Yeah.
Handle everything as well?
Yeah.
Exciting.
They're having to haul it right now.
So, a couple of questions. On, uh, the after-hours and weekend alarm stuff, Lance onsite at midnight to help contractors with pipe flow. Who's contractors?
They were cutting over some, uh, switching over some, some pipes, lines, so we had to bypass our pumps, and so he used a truck, and that's, they do it at night when the flows are low. So, he just used our truck, filled it up, and had some sewer plant, dumped it, so those, uh, contractors could get down in the pit and cut the pipes out and the pumps.
So, contractors that were here doing work? So contractors that were here doing work on the?
Yeah, doing the construction, yeah.
And then the other one I saw that raised my eyebrows was Lance and Michael pulled plant drain pump, found chain had broken and sucked up into the pump.
Correct, yeah.
No, no damage?
No, no.
Cause that sounds bad to me.
Yeah, 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 it's a similar, uh, yeah, or stainless steel chains, which somebody put in a non-stainless, you know, stainless steel chains are extremely expensive.
Okay.
It was, it broke and.
Alright, so, so no damage, though?
No, no damage, it's back online. And rest of this month, we're doing a training on a lot of the new equipment, so, you know, as we bring it online.
And what is a future remediation project along Old Highway E?
Uh, I had the engineering company out of Georgia, I guess they're looking at doing some of this EPA remediation along that pre-clotting of Highway E, and she just had some questions about where she could get water to, I guess, keep dust down and stuff, whether they could use what we discharge. And I said, that, that would be a DNR EPA question, you know. If not, I said, a lot of the other contractors that buy water from the city, but, you know, you can use our.
So they're just, they're just wanting some water, then?
Yeah, some water and just, uh, oh, want to know where some of her lines are located at, so, so they don't tear them up, like, you have remediation along there.
Okay, thanks.
Victor informed us the other day that, um, the school's actually having to haul some of theirs now, so.
That literally stinks.
Yeah.
Only two water repairs, that looks good.
Yeah, that's a pretty light, pretty light month when it comes to water.
Oh, I don't know if you guys know this or not, but they brought in two loads, um, of, had a big long conversation with a couple different street crews, um, Lonnie, remember Lonnie from Sinica that came up and rode around with us? I visited with him again, um, on some of our, our issues with some potholes and different things like that. He, um, we discussed Blevins, we ordered a, two truckloads, I think it was, from Blevins of the, what is it, cold mix? On the two warmest days, they started working on them. They've covered, uh, big chunks of, what, Random Road?
Yep.
All the way around. Um, they have a list of them. They were supposed to go out and get a list of potholes, come back with it, start filling them in, and then, uh, they're gonna come back in a couple of weeks to redo it, but I know they dropped off another load this morning, so they are on it.
Good job, good job.
I'll make a motion to approve Department Head reports.
Second.
Doreen has made the motion to approve the Department Head reports. Dustin has seconded that. All those in favor? Four zero. Okay, moving on to the appointment of the judge. Um, what you see in front of you is a letter from Jared Thomas with his intent to be our judge. Uh, after Judge White passed away, I requested Selby to appoint someone for us for a little bit. He appointed Jared. Jared's been in that seat since then. So, uh, we did pass the ordinance as to where our judge is no longer a voted-in, um, judge, and that they must be an attorney. So Jared is clearly an attorney. He would like to stay in our courts. He believes that a reasonable amount, uh, for an attorney's position, it would be five hundred dollars a month for that position. I do believe, he, he's with your diamond also, right? Okay, yes. So, basically, what I'm requesting is the board's, um, approval to appoint Jared as our judge.
Is there any discussion from City Hall workers or the police department?
Jared has good job, he's, he's, he's solid and, uh, kind of filling out, we're having to balance out our, um, organ stuff, some of the organ stuff, he's got to feedback what, what he wants to do with it, but our focus with PD right now is start building some of our organs as far as animals, uh, cluttered up yours, uh, stuff like that, we're trying to.
And you're working well with him.
Uh, yeah, he, he's, he's doing good, we're, we're just having to balance out, everything, that everything's coming together nicely.
Okay.
Yeah, previously served as the city's prosecutor for several years, and so it helps if he's been familiar with the process here.
Okay, I just didn't want to make a decision without talking to the ones that are dealing with him on the basis. So I'd make a motion that we approve his appointment as the city's municipal judge.
Okay, Doreen has made the motion to approve, uh, Jared Thomas as our judge.
I'll second.
Kristi has seconded that. All those in favor? Four zero. Okay, now we're gonna move on to a discussion regarding courts. Um, Jennifer, did you want to come up here to discuss this, or?
Um, I wanted to see. We have.
Can you come up to our microphone, please?
I, I saw you were just asking if she wanted to come up.
She's like, no, I don't.
Let, let me introduce you, Council, um.
Jennifer Howard.
Howard, okay, I'm sorry, I was like, I don't know your last name.
Yep.
Um, so Jennifer Howard is the mayor of Diamond, um, so go ahead.
Okay, so we have, we had a full-time court clerk. She has left us. Um, we're at a place where we're trying to decide how to move forward, and we want to keep our small-town court. But I am at this place trying to decide, because I didn't feel that we needed a full-time clerk. I didn't feel like that was, because she was the court clerk and that's all she did, she didn't collect utility payments, that was it. So, I went, we were gonna hire somebody part-time, but then I know that you guys were hiring also, and Lana and I had talked and she felt the same way, you know, thirty hours is a lot for someone to work, so what if we combined our courts together?
What does your council, what's their take on this conversation?
So, we want to keep our court, and we want to keep it local, but at the same time, I think that they, some of them are fine with it. A, a lot of them said, go have the discussion with Granby, see if they're even interested. We want to see if they're interested in it, and we can start that conversation to see what we can do to work together to combine it. Um, to even see if you, cause if you guys aren't interested at all, it doesn't make any difference, I'm just here, just asking a question, to see if you guys are even interested.
Well, I believe our citizens and council would probably say the same thing, we'd want to keep ours local. So, do, do you want to come to our court?
I think that would have to be something that we would have to decide together. Um, it's hard, because we do ten times the amount of dollars that you guys do in court.
Yeah, we know.
So, that's, that's a hard place for us to, it would. It would have to be some sort of good deal for us, you know what I mean? Cause we're putting a lot of trust over here when you guys do.
It's the same judge, correct?
Right, same judge, so it just.
So you say you don't trust us?
No, I'm just saying, I'm just saying, you, you know, that's a lot of money for us, so.
But you would still retain the money?
Right.
Portion of it.
Right, but it's, I, it's just to see what you guys are, if, if you're even interested in this conversation. If you guys are like, no, I want to keep, you know, absolutely have to stay here if that's what you want to do, and, but, in Lana and I's discussion, she, you said, ten hours a week is what you've been, or previous, or what you think?
Our court clerk works twenty hours a week.
So she works twenty?
Yeah.
So, whereas.
And, does she only do court clerk stuff?
Um, no, she does assist with our utility payments, that Sandra has a few people stacked up, that Sandra will take payments also, so it does benefit us to have somebody during the office.
So, so what would the arrangement be? I guess, I guess I'm asking, what, what's this gonna look like?
That's where it's difficult, too, and, and the one thing that we did notice about our court, cause we, you know, we're percolating these thoughts, cause you, you mentioned it, so I'm paying more attention, and so a lot of our people came on foot. The joke was, we had fifteen, twenty people in here for court and only two cars outside. Um, so a lot of our people are walking here. I don't know what kind of traffic you're getting in, like, if, if yours is more, um, traffic-based tickets, do those people have the means to drive further to Granby? Cause I'm gonna tell you, our people may not have the means to get to you. So we're gonna be chasing down a whole bunch of warrants, and warrants cost us money, because when we cash those in, it costs us what, per person?
Ten dollars per day.
Ten dollars a?
Well, ten dollars for the first day, forty-five, they're, they're.
Right, this is just a discussion.
Yeah, sure.
If, if you're interested in it or not, like, we can work out the details.
I think it's worth a discussion, just to save both towns money.
I mean, it's hard, it's hard to answer questions when the judge isn't here to answer those for the legal side of things.
Yeah, gotcha.
Um, so, but, but I'm at a place, do I hire somebody part-time if we're gonna enter an agreement?
Gotcha.
Is where I'm at.
So can I give some background on this?
Yes, please do.
For the information, the court underwent a review from OSC, which is Office of the State Department of Administration, last week. There were some changes that needed to be made within our court and in the Diamond's court. Their clerk gave her notice, our clerk gave her notice, unrelated, we have hired a new court clerk already. We've tossed around the idea of having somebody here thirty hours a week as opposed to twenty hours a week. We're required to have somebody available for court payments thirty hours a week, but Sandra has been able to take up that other ten hours in the past. So what, my conversation with OSC was, she threw out some recommendations, you can turn your court over to the county, that's extremely difficult to do.
And that's what you're meaning when you said you'd like to keep it local, you don't want it to the county, correct?
Right, we have no, we have, like, if we have to. Hire somebody part-time, we'll hire somebody part-time, but what I was looking at is, if I didn't think that my court clerk should be full-time, even thirty hours a week I worried about, and she is, is in the same boat, why wouldn't we just hire someone together? And make them full-time, and then they're at one location, and maybe they come over here just to do court, and maybe they, or, I don't know, I don't.
So, so the options were to go to the county?
Go to county. Um, we could square Sandra in as a deputy court clerk, so that she, she's been authorized to take payments.
She closed her eyes.
She's been handwriting receipts, and apparently that's not allowable, she has to make them directly into their system.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Um, or we could combine courts with Diamond. They do that in McDonald County, their small municipalities do that a lot, um, Pineville, Goodman, Anderson, and Southwest City are all combined together in Pineville, I believe.
I do want to ask one question, because this has came up before. Recall when Fairview, was it Fairview Mayor? One of them, I can't remember, came over here and we had this huge conversation, and we were like, no. So if we do this, if we do combine, are, are we gonna go back and combine others too, or what's that? That's, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not trying to be complicated, but it just came to my mind, cause I remember this whole very vivid conversation that Steve was like, no, but.
And that was the, the judge's opinion on that. I don't want to mispeak, but it's my understanding that Fairview had quite a mess going on over there, and they were trying to turn it over to the county, and the county was not.
They didn't want to.
Being receptive.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that was my understanding of those circumstances.
Well, when we've talked about court before, Chief, I, I think that's been the, that's the general feeling from the county, is they don't want our business either, right?
No, Judge Selby says he actually doesn't want our business, and it makes it very difficult for us if he is having to.
Right.
Yeah, they, they won't enforce our ordinances.
So it was a discussion that we held based on what the first suggestions were, she gave me three good suggestions, um, and then shortly after that, Jennifer called when we had that discussion.
The, the, um, person that we hired as a court clerk now, would she be willing to go to Diamond the other part of the day, or every other day of the week, or?
So, I don't know if that serves the purpose. I don't know if twenty hours here and twenty hours there serves that thirty-dollar requirement. Um, and I don't think it does, because then they would be required to have yet somebody there for ten hours additional, and you would be required to have somebody there. So I don't know that that would solve the issue. It would have to be one place or the other for forty hours, or thirty hours minimum.
And she did say that she was willing to take on more hours, right? She, she did say that, yes.
She did, yes, yeah, she did. She did say that.
Savannah, right?
And she seems, yes, Savannah, and she seems like she's doing a really good job. She spent her two days this week and she's really bright. Um, I, I will say, and I mentioned this concern, and this is totally, I don't want to speak out of term, but my concern is that she would be working in a building by herself. Um, she's young, I think she would need some oversight. I don't think that would be suitable for her active time, and I don't want to speak about that. She's just learning.
And right now, it's not, it, she wouldn't be in a building by herself. And we're trying to move some things around in our city in hopes that the building that it's in with the police department, that is separate, but still together, um, will be just a court building, but that's four months down the road. So, there is somebody that will be in and out there, if that's your concern. But I think, it's hard when you're talking a hundred thousand dollars and you're talking seven thousand dollars to not have it in Diamond, not saying that you guys wouldn't do what we need you to do, it's just, it's. I, I don't know that my counsel would be opposed to having a court here, but. I don't, I don't. I think you're like, I absolutely want it here, if you want to join courses or festivals, with the cost of the first time, fifty-fifty, I, that's what I'm. Here to ask you what, what's your, what's your guys' thoughts?
I'm with Jamie on the walkers.
Yeah, my thoughts are I'd like to keep it here. I'd like to keep Granby Court.
We would certainly entertain you coming over here, and we could do it for a couple of months on a trial basis to see if that would benefit your citizens. Would that be acceptable?
And certainly, in my view, it's an oversight by, by state courts.
Mm-hmm, yeah, cause it doesn't come to us, it'll, yeah.
Yeah, right, and so, I, I, I'm not discounting what you're saying.
Right.
But certainly the oversight would come from state courts.
Right.
We have significant budgets, and I feel like we manage our money very well, but.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just, yeah, yeah. So, I guess it's up to you if you.
How, how, how long are you guys wanting to wait for an answer on that? Like, what's your?
I need to know quickly, cause I, I mean, we have court at the end of the month, so I have to either hire somebody, get them in, get them trained, or we go into agreement of something else, so. And that's.
OSC could assist with it if our court is willing.
Yeah, yeah, she could definitely, we could definitely share if we needed to.
We could.
We've helped others.
We could do that while you're working on finding a court clerk, so you don't have to just grab somebody off the street and say, this is it, you're, you're the one.
Well.
So you can continue to get your cases.
Yes, Dustin.
If it's by the end of the month, is what you're, what you're talking about, before you just?
Yep, cause we have court right before you guys have court.
That can be like, I mean, if you can convince your council that you do that on a trial basis, just.
I ha, I mean, I, we have a council meeting on Monday, so you guys tell me what you're willing to do and I'll go.
Well, I think everybody, it sounds to me like everybody here is gonna say, we want to keep our court here, but if, if you guys want to combine forces and, and if Savannah's willing to work more hours and we, you know, split the cost on the court clerk, I think everybody would be in agreement that that's a great thing, but i- if, if you're willing to wait till the next time we have court and, and you send your folks over here and we just see how it works, and that way you'll have something to take to your council if.
But also, you'd have to, um, reach out to each person that you've already ticketed that thinks their court is going to be in Diamond, and they'd have to come here. So, how would that look?
I, this, yeah.
And the clerk.
The judge and, and the prosecutor would manage that. They likely would cancel the court if they didn't have a clerk and it was rescheduled.
And they could say it's gonna be rescheduled to the Granby facility until we, Diamond are at capacity, that we can handle that again with a clerk. Right, Lana, is that what?
Chief, what's your thoughts?
You're gonna have to have two different courts when I move them all together, so, two different courts, you're gonna have to supply it with a bailiff, I mean, it's gonna, things have to be worked out.
So. So what you're stating is i- if we were to move our courts to Diamond, then our officers, which is, would be our bailiff and our officer that issues tickets, or any other officer, like Mike, um, you would all be out of our town for that day, dealing with that situation, or for however long it takes to do court over there. So that's the same thing with your city, your, your officers are gonna have to. Your, your officers are going to have to leave your town and, and come to the other town and you're going to be without. Um, that's, that's going to be an issue.
For both.
Honestly, for, for ours, definitely, that's going to be an issue. I can, I can see that being a huge problem already. So, I think, I think like they stated, uh, we're willing to combine, but we're not willing to give on moving. So, if you want to combine and come to us, I think we would be interested.
So you're wanting to keep the court clerk here. There's no negotiation on that. She has to stay here, so we would be reimbursing you for half of her salary. Is that, that's what I'm understanding.
And if you moved it here, so, so if you reimbursed us for half of her salary, um, we're talking, if you guys utilized our facilities, they came over, we won't have to provide any kind of, uh, would we have to provide the bailiff for court? Or would you guys provide it?
I would have to ask that.
Okay. I guess, I guess if we had to provide a bailiff, or if it cost us, um, overhead as far as employees to, to be here, um.
So, so if, if the only thing that we're splitting is the court clerk, that's it. Like, I'll take care of everything on my side. All we're doing is splitting the court clerk and whatever cost. Come, pay for supplies, office supplies, whatever.
How's that, how's that work with our judge? Like, if he's, if he's employed by you and us, and he comes in one day versus two, is he still going to, if you did court for Granby in the morning, court for Diamond?
See, this is why I wish he was here.
Yeah.
He could answer those questions. Because I, I don't know if he would try to do one and try to do, like, Diamond one section, Granby the second section at one time. I don't know the answers to those questions.
Do you have something?
I think that it would just be based on what your agreement is to pay him per month.
Okay, so it goes back to that.
We have an agreement to pay him a monthly fee, and they have an agreement to pay him a monthly fee.
Yeah, that would stay, okay. Okay.
So then you just have to work out days, court, you know, what, what court days are.
I guess, I mean, yeah, yeah, it would be, I guess the, the only benefit you would get out of that would be, you know, splitting that court clerk.
So, you, I just want to be clear about what, what we're deciding. What we're, what you guys are okay with.
Yeah, yeah.
You want the court clerk in this building at all time, like, for her hours. And you want court to be held here for you guys.
Well, according to Trevor, you'd probably need to supply your own bailiff, too.
I'm not, I'm just talking about the, just the, just the, just the clerk.
Yes, a hundred percent of that's what we're saying.
So she would just stay in this building unless we decided she'll work here, collect money, and then she'll come to Diamond for court.
Does that, does that save you guys from having to build your court? I mean, you were saying you're going to have to switch it all out and move it.
That doesn't, it doesn't have to do, it doesn't have to do with court, it has to do with the others. So, yeah. I just want to make sure I understand. You guys want her here, you want, so nothing changes for you guys except for we pay half a salary.
As opposed to a whole salary of what you'd have to pay? Yes, I think so. Is that, doesn't sound like a whole lot of negotiation on your end. I know what you're saying, you're saying.
Yeah, I'm just making sure, I want to be.
Giving much.
Right.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure that when I go to my board, that I'm being very clear about. You guys said that this is what you want, this is what you're willing to negotiate. Half the salary is what it is.
I mean, is there anything, I mean, because that, that sounds about like all we're able to offer.
Because we can use her for thirty hours and we can pay her for thirty hours. We don't have to, we don't have to do that. We don't have to send her over there. We can hire her for the thirty hours if we want her.
Right.
I mean, you're asking us for the favor, so, yeah.
Kind of, not, not exactly, not exactly, because their court can actually afford much more than ours can. Because our court does not.
They should just hire one.
Our, our court does not even cover itself right now. Yeah, our court doesn't cover the salary of the court clerk, just FYI.
And that's why she helps with the other things, pretty much. And that's why she also can help with bills and things like that.
Wouldn't it be nice to have the court, both courts on the same day? Like, an hour card or something? Because if not, when they have their court here, somebody from the city's got to come in and lock the door and oversee the facility or whatever, and lock it back when they're done. So that's going to kind of be a burden on that person.
Well, the city clerk would be here anyway. She would have to be here for that. The court clerk, sorry. Not that we don't want to work together with our neighbors, but we, we know that our citizens wouldn't be able to get to Diamond for a court case.
I don't think they're going to make it. That, that would be my main concern, is we, they're walking up in here.
Right, but, I mean, the question, I guess my question is, would you be willing to let your clerk be there? I mean, do a lot of people come in to pay court tickets?
That's a Sandra question.
Say it again?
I mean, like, dur- before, before court, before court, how many people come in off the street to pay their tickets?
Do they come in randomly?
So would it, would it actually hurt them? I mean, like, you say nobody comes in before court to pay their tickets, then making, moving that move to Diamond would make sense to move the clerk. And then she could just come over here for just court.
Like, the day before your court, you get a, several people coming in saying, I don't want to be at court, I want to pay whatever you're going to.
We have a bunch of tickets paid all month long.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sandra. Her question is, do people come in throughout the month slowly paying their courts? Or do they normally just pay during court? Or do they not pay at all? Just FYI.
I don't know a lot of what happens during court. I know, like, as far as me taking payments up there, they trickle in here and there. It's not.
But they can pay online, though. They're not, they don't have to do it at a facility, they can pay online?
Right.
Let me ask you this question. If someone showed up here and our court clerk was over there and we were like, we can't take your money, but you can pay online, can, can we provide them with an iPad to pay online? Is that legal?
Well, if they have cash.
I think we have one previously, in the home, for people to, just a courtesy outlet that people could use to make money.
Because what I'm looking at is, like, if, if we did do a negotiation and our, our clerk went over there, we're paying half for a clerk that we would normally pay dou- you know, double for. Like, we're saving money and we still have the court over here.
I don't, I don't know that we're saving money by sending somebody over there. Because if we have somebody here, it's twenty hours a week if we have an additional person in the office. And we are, as we all know, have been struggling to be short-handed in our city hall. If she's over there and just comes over here once in a while, then I feel like we're losing.
You can't be moving, can't be moving her back and forth, because she's not going to be able to do her job.
And I think that for Verda was clear that if you move the court, you move the court, you move there, you move the.
That, yeah, that, that is, that is right, because then you don't have your files, like, right there. That's going to be, that would be a fiasco, having one over there and one over here.
Because the files go over the court.
Yeah, this is why we're having this discussion.
That's why we're going back, because I sat, I sat with Jared and Sandra a long time the other day. I mean, I was up here just kind of hanging out, taking people's utility payments the other day. And so, Jared, Jared and, and Sandra was in here while I was sitting over there. And, and so I just heard the discussions. We talked about how they have to have this filing cabinet beside, and these are the things we need to do differently. This does sound very, very complicated in order to do this, um, to, to share. I'm just not sure if the logistics is going to work out.
That's fine. And all I'm here to do is just see if you guys wanted to do it or not, that's, that's all I was.
Yeah. What? Okay, wait, I, I'm sorry, we're, we're not trying to dismiss you.
We appreciate you trying to at least join forces.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. Okay, that was an interesting discussion. It was great meeting you, too. I heard, I heard you on the phone several times. Okay, so number five, the acceptance of a leave of absence request. A- as you all know, um, as Lana just stated, we, we have been shorthanded in the office. Our city clerk has officially put in a leave of absence request. She is requesting three months' leave of absence. Uh, I do believe that we have had personnel discussions beyond this, um, outside of, you know, in closed session, we have not taken votes on. But I think we are all on the same page with her. I, I'm not at liberty to state anymore beyond that, but she's asking if you guys would accept her request for a leave of absence for three months, please.
And it doesn't say it in there, but it's under the terms that we discussed in the closed meeting.
It would be under those terms, yes. And if there's any questions about cell phone usage, it's been paid for for three months, outside of the city, by a anonymous donor.
Okay, I make a motion to approve the leave of absence for three months under the conditions that we discussed in the closed meeting at the last meeting.
I'll second. Dustin has made the motion to accept the leave of absence under the terms that were discussed in a closed session. Uh, Bobby seconds that. All those in favor?
But you saw the letter.
Yeah.
That's what.
Well, she's talking about the terms.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, we're going to say, we're going to say, uh, three with one abstention.
Yeah.
Please.
I wasn't here for the closed session, so I'm not sure the.
Christie's going to abstain. That's, it's a good move, yes. Okay, so my next, it brings me to number six. We are exhausted. Uh, we have worked very hard to keep up, stay caught up. Um, Sandra's working extra trying to keep it up. Lana's working extra trying to keep it up. I learned how to take utility payments. And, uh, so, we came across this awesome resume. Uh, I would like to introduce Deb. Deb, would you come up here, please? Devin, you're going to have to forgive me for some reason, I, is it Billman?
Billings.
Billings, sorry, I apologize, I knew I'd get that wrong. So this is Deb Billings. Um, I took the liberty to appoint her to her position as the interim city clerk um, in a emergency position. We can, I can do that as the mayor. Um, it, it's basically at the next regular meeting, I can bring her forward and state, this is who I would like to appoint as our city interim city clerk. It's upon this counsel to vote to agree to put her in. Um, I do want you guys to feel free to ask her questions. Um, she's got a stellar resume, she has been a city clerk before.
Do we have a copy of that resume?
I did not put it in this file, so, no. What questions do you have for?
What was on your resume?
What was on my resume? I have a bachelor's license in business administration. I spent twenty-plus years in HR. And then, as a human resource manager in a manufacturing setting in various places, in Missouri and Kansas. And then, um, I, my most, and then after that, I was, um, executive director for Pro Musica, which is in Joplin, where I lived at the time. Um, and it was a, an arts presenter organization and of one person.
An office.
So I wore all the hats. And then, um, my most recent employment was at temporary, as temporary city clerk in Fairview, where things are always really exciting. And, um, I worked there for four months, um, when their city clerk and their mayor left. And, um, I told them that I would hold down the court until coming up election. And, um, there was a total turnover in, in city leadership at that time, which is fine. And, um, and then I, like I said, I left then in April of that, of that year. And I've just been enjoying retirement since then. So.
I'm sorry.
I was going to say, what I, what I found interesting is, she was also assisted in her training by Lana. Lana actually, because I, I remember getting these emails, all these Fairview people were mad because those Granby people were over there helping. And, um, Lana actually was assisting and, and helping train her. Um, so there's a little training that needs to go in for her to step in and actually start making this happen. Sorry, go ahead.
I, I was just going to say, and, um, as I understand it, you're only interested in it for a temporary.
Yes, I'm, I'm, like I said, I'm going to retire. And I have, I have, the May, the end of May is my, you know, my maximum time that I would stay. I have good garden plans and I want to do things with my grandkids over the summer, so.
Oh, just so you know, Victor already solved your garden problem. There's a community garden right over there. So you can stay longer than May if you really want to garden.
Okay, and, um, I, when I came into Fairview, and I, I just want to say this because I appreciate all the, the help I got from Granby. I came into Fairview with zero training. I mean, there was nobody there to show me how to do anything. So, um, I had to figure out the water utility billing system and QuickBooks as well. And like Jamie said, Lana. Came over and spent, uh, one, one day during, one, one time during the week, and then she came on a Saturday on her own time and helped me figure out how to pay bills and, and all of that's coming back, so. So I've got a little bit of advance, you know, on my training, so.
I think you sound pretty perfect for a gig myself.
I know, and look at her smile. I, I was talking about, I was like, man, that was a hostile environment back then. And she's just like, yeah, it sure was, and worked right through it. I'm like, oh my goodness, look at you, you know?
Yeah, I think you are.
I am originally from Fairview, so, um, I'm, I have moved back to Fairview and live in town now. And for the sake of transparency, I am running for alderman in Fairview on South Ward. Election will be in April. But I double-checked and there's no issue, because it's a different city, so.
I'll make a motion that we accept the appointment of, uh, Deb Billings for our interim city clerk.
I'll second. Oh, hey, I've got a couple of seconds. Okay, uh, Doreen has made the motion to accept Deb Billings as our, um, interim city clerk. Bobby has seconded that. All those in favor? Four, zero, welcome to our team.
Welcome.
Thank you. She has been working her tail off this week already. Okay, uh, public comment time. Do we have anybody on the list over there, Steve?
I've got the last.
All right, you were prepared.
Nobody on.
All right, okay, well, I would entertain a motion to dismiss.
Make a motion we dismiss.
Second.
Doreen has made a very quick motion to dismiss. Dustin has seconded that, all those in favor, four, zero. We're dismissing at seven-thirty. That beats that.